Thank you for joining us here today. I'm Julie Kennedy, General Manager with Grand Rapids Public Utilities. We did have City Councilor and GRPUC Commissioner Spud to do a welcome as we had done before. And I'm sorry to say he's not able to be here today. He sends his condolences. He is someone who personally understands this issue and has gone through this as he spoke about in March. And so we really lean on him for that understanding of what we're going through and what customers are going through. So, thank you for coming together here with us. We do have ICTV recording this, so we will put it on our website as we did before, so that those that are not here in attendance are able to see it. We did see quite a bit more viewing of the video after the fact, even after our March 1. And we will get going on a presentation that is a follow-up and an update to our March meeting. So we will go through a few things on our response activities here today, and I'll talk about those, our two-pronged approach that we've been using on our monitoring and our disinfection planning. And then I'll turn it over to Chad Seidel here, President of Corona Environmental. He is the lead of our consulting firm team, and he will talk us through much more of the details as far as the chlorination of the water system. And then we will turn it over to a panel question and answer at the end, and we can ask questions up here like we did in March. And then we're also available until 6 o'clock, just one-on-one questions. Sometimes people don't want to ask questions in a big, formal setting. We understand that. You're welcome to come on up and ask any questions at the end. So with that, I'm going to go into our key three points really that we are addressing. Legionella. Legionella is the bacteria that is the cause of Legionnaires' disease. It is a current and present concern in our community. We were made aware of this at the beginning of the year. We began implementing, or began our plans for implementing chloramine disinfection. We're going to talk about that. And what you can do to help. Again, this is a shared responsibility in a public water supply. There are things we can do, and there are things that you can do, and you'll hear a lot about that here today. So a little bit of a recap. I recognize a lot of the faces. I can't remember if that was from the March meeting or just because I've talked to a lot of you here in the last couple of months. But a recap of that March community workshop where we were here for the first time talking about Legionnaires. And Legionnaires, again, is that serious type of pneumonia, lung infection. The common sources are showerheads, cooling towers, fountains, hot tubs, things where you'll notice the water is aerosolized, right? And so it's not from drinking the water, as a reminder, and you've probably heard, I hope you've heard. It's really about breathing in those aerosolized vapors and mist. And so that's why showerheads and things like that are of concern. It's where you're inhaling that water that contains, or that mist that contains legionella bacteria. So when we were here in March, Minnesota Department of Health had reported that there were 14 cases, and they had attributed those cases to the municipal water supply here in Grand Rapids. That was the commonality across those cases. And so they brought that, they were here with us in March, and that really is that background on legionella and Legionnaires. And so at that March meeting, we committed to an environmental assessment that included the investigation of sampling that water system through our distribution system as well as customer buildings. Again, it's that shared responsibility. We only get the water as far as your home or building. And then we agreed to disinfection planning, and we've been working hard for three months on that. We, as a collective "we," a team of the nation's best experts that are working on how to best chlorinate a system in an unchlorinated system in the presence of legionella bacteria. And that is not something where you can just Google a checklist and be able to do it. There are a lot of things that go into that, and they've been working very hard for the past three months to get us ready for that. And then we've, our commitment again to communication with customers, whether it's through various media, our website, letters, emails, social media. I'm out in a number of facilities with County Health as well, really just getting, and these meetings as well, getting in front of customers so that they are well aware of the issues and how they can help protect themselves. So updates since March. Unfortunately, as of yesterday, we heard there was a 22nd case that was reported, and they are confined to the city of Grand Rapids, or they are attributed, I should say, to the city of Grand Rapids. And we have continued with our investigation since we left here in March. We began sampling our own system. I think if you remember, we were looking for volunteers that would want to be part of our sampling program. We are sampling our water system from the wells, to the plants, to the towers, to all the way throughout our distribution system, as well into customer buildings. We have done tests in conjunction with the University of Minnesota. They were up here, they've been up here three times? Twice? Two or three ti- two times, thanks Brett. Two times, and done additional testing at the same places that we've done, but with additional sensitivities and large-volume testing. We've also engaged Department of Health to do testing on the testing that we are doing as well. And so we send our samples down to them, and they do further testing of the samples that we have collected. Our second prong of our two-pronged approach here is that disinfection planning and giving very deliberate consideration to how we balance legionella outbreak with the regulatory requirements that are put in place by Department of Health for doing a chlorinated system. And so we are continuing. You should have all gotten letters. I hope that's why you're here, or you heard it out in the community. All of our customers have received a letter letting them know that we are moving forward with that disinfection. So those are our two prongs of our approach to get through the mitigation efforts, the sampling and the disinfection planning. So a little bit on that sampling that we've done here in the last two and a half months. The legionella monitoring program is about, is a weekly program. Every week we do tests in about seven facilities, so there are about 20 tests that we do. And we go in and sample three points in any given building. The first is a point that we call distribution. It's right by the meter. You can see right up here is a picture of a meter. We test right near the meter with a tap that has been installed typically, or we pull the meter if we need to. And that is indicative of the water leaving our system going into a building or into a home. And so we want to know what that looks like right as it enters into the building. And so we've got samples there, and then at the same time, we also sample the cold water somewhere throughout the building. Ideally, somewhere back in that plumbing, right? Somewhere that has had a chance to sit in that plumbing a little bit. And then we sample a hot water system. So maybe in a mop sink in a larger building, or maybe in a shower in a residence, something like that. And so we have those three numbers to be able to compare. What is it like as it goes into the building? And then what is it like in the hot and the cold somewhere deep in the building? And so we've been doing that every week, and I say "we" and I can't tell you enough, we can't do it without our staff. Long hours, lots of learning, fast learning curve to be able to get up and do this kind of testing. It's not something that we were used to doing. The Minnesota Department of Health doesn't require legionella testing on a regular basis, so this is not something that we knew what to do before we entered into this testing protocol. And so there was a lot of, a lot of learning and practice. And so you can see here, the results on the far right are a sample, it's a tray that we use for doing that sample. And on the top, you can see the clear color. That's indicative of non-detect or not having positive legionella samples. Whereas the bottom, the brown, is a quality control measure here, and that shows presence of legionella. And so that's what we do every week, about 21 samples every single week, and then we take those samples that are positive and we send those down to the University of Minnesota. So that was part of our testing that we agreed to do. Again, we're still looking for volunteers. We've got a fairly decent list, but we're always looking for people. And with that program, it's free. It doesn't, we don't charge you for that, but you need to become part of our sampling result and our data so that we can learn from that. And that's what this would look like. On our website is our sample location map. You can see we are testing throughout the entire system, not in any one area. We're looking for samples all the way across our distribution, and from the far north to the south, to the east, to the west, we are finding results with positive legionella samples in premise buildings, in buildings throughout the distribution system. So, how to read those results? This is on our website if you had a chance to go to it. It's kind of, we use the green, yellow, red as kind of that stoplight gauge to be able to assess what is concerning. And so you'll see here on the right, a green is a baseline or a potential for growth. And those are going to be numbers and values of testing that come back under 100, okay? And this is a most probable number of 100 milliliter sample, but really just looking at the numbers. Anything in that under 100, there's potential for growth, and we want to keep monitoring. But it's not terribly high. When we get into the 100 to 1,000, we're looking at possible growth, and we need of bacteria in the water. That's what that's sampling. And then over 1,000, we need, that indicates growth, and that needs immediate remediation. And so that kind of gives you a gauge of what those numbers mean when you're looking at them. And so on the left side here, you've got just a summary of our samples. Of all of the samples that were collected, 0%, zero of them, of the 61 samples have come back positive in our distribution system. That's hard. That's great, right? But that's hard because it doesn't get us in any one direction. It basically says we have non-detect in our water distribution at the wells, at the towers, everywhere that we've tested in the distribution system. And when you think about it, that's pretty common because the bacteria grows in warm water and when it's stagnant. And our water is neither of those two things. Our water is cold. We're a groundwater system, and it comes out fairly cold, and it's always moving. And so it's, that makes sense that we are not finding it anywhere in our distribution system. However, we are finding it in a number of buildings. And so you can see there, 51% of our samples have been detected in our, in the hot water samples that we're taking in buildings. Anywhere from a non-detect, which is a less than one or less than 10 number, and up to 1,416, which is in that red zone, right? Indicative of growth in the plumbing. And then also in the cold water, we're seeing about 37% of the samples there. Again, some of the messaging that we have been sending out, keep the cold water cold and the hot water hot. It's that middle ground that is really good for bacteria growth. And so we're wanting to make sure, even though the cold water is cold, it may not be cold enough. And so we have seen some positive samples in that. Another way to look at that is a graph just of maybe severity, and so you can see over time here, each of our samples and really where we're seeing that red line is the 1,000 mark. And so we have seen of late a few samples that are up above that 1,000 mark. Again, with our sampling protocol, every time we get a test result, the phone calls go out. Some of you in this room get those phone calls from me. And so every time we, that's the benefit of knowing the information and having the data, is that you can find out if you are positive as far as a test in the building and do something about it. We've seen some really great success stories as far as getting the data, finding that they're positive, implementing the best practices, turning the water temperature up higher in the hot water heater, flushing on a regular basis through the showerheads and faucets. We retest a week or two later, and those results are down. And so it works, and the program is working, but you need to have the data in order to know if it's working or not. And so we have proven in the last two and a half months of testing, it is working. So that has been, the first prong of our approach is sampling, finding out where it is. Is there somewhere in our system that is growing it? We have not found that, but we are finding it in the buildings. The second approach is that disinfection planning. And so again, being very careful to move expediently, but not hastily, not too fast. We've got to be very careful that in an undisinfected system, if you are implementing chlorine too fast, there can be adverse effects that would be as dangerous or more dangerous than the impact of the legionella bacteria. And so really taking our time to be diligent in getting our water tested. We have completed a number of tests, and Chad will speak to that, on chlorine versus chloramine. There are two main ways to disinfect using chlorine. One is chlorine and one is chloramines. We have determined that the chloramine should be implemented, and Chad will get into the details on that. And we will be doing that as, this month. We have targeted, you know, by July 1st that we will have disinfection into the system, and parts are showing up. I think Chad's got some pictures on that, and we are ready to go. So that is our meeting here today to let you know that we are, we are very close to that. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Chad. He's going to get into some details on chloramines and disinfection, and then we'll go to question and answer after that.
Yeah, thanks folks. Thanks Julie. And certainly thanks for the engagement to listen about what's going on in your community and what it means for your water supply and public health protection. And frankly, welcome you helping to continue to share the message with the folks in the community so everybody can be a part of this. So the first question really is, what does it even mean to be implementing chloramine disinfection? So as Julie said, water systems in the U.S., when they implement disinfection, use one of two types of disinfection to maintain a, what's called a disinfectant residual in the water system, either free chlorine or total chlorine, which also goes by the name of chloramine. And chloramine disinfectant is the combination of chlorine and ammonia. And it's commonly used across the country, many places across the state. It's been used for decades. In fact, Denver started in 1917, and roughly 1 in 5 Americans use water that has been disinfected with chloramines. So it's pretty common here in the state. Disinfectant, since you know, Grand Rapids is going from an undisinfected water supply to a disinfected water supply, I thought it'd be helpful to just put on a map all the water systems in the state that add disinfectant. And you can note the difference between the blue open circles of free chlorine and the closed green circles for chloramine. It's widely used, and you might wonder, well, what will my water be like when it has chloramine in the water system here in Grand Rapids? And just think back to the last time that you were, you know, getting lunch in Duluth is probably one of the most recent occasions. There are many places across the state that use chloramines, and even more so that use just disinfectant in general with free chlorine or chloramine. Common, pretty usual condition to be able to experience, and I'm sure that you've had that here in the state. So we've done a lot of work with the team, and frankly, kudos to the entire Grand Rapids staff here who have worked tirelessly to implement the monitoring program and help us do the assessments necessary to come to the decision point of how to implement disinfection most appropriately. So the real key question initially was, we know we can either add chlorine or we can add chloramine, which is the combination of chlorine and ammonia. And we went through the detailed assessment, you see a number of folks here for how we tested this in our laboratory, and we used that to come to the decision point of how to move forward with chloramine, which we've done based upon some key results. And rather than bore you with the very detailed technical memorandum, I'll simply summarize that chloramine has been shown in the Grand Rapids water to be much more effective because it's more stable and it lasts longer. Because of that, it provides better public health protection against the bacterial growth and specifically legionella that we know to be of concern in the community right now. We also know that chloramine has a less noticeable chlorine taste and odor, and so it should be more readily adapted to with the rest of the community involved. Now, what does this mean for the water utility? The water utility's been hard at work doing a number of things to help be prepared and ready for this. So first and foremost, installed new equipment at the water treatment plant, some changes and improvements in the water distribution system. You'll note top right, there are new pumps being installed, new monitors being installed. And these are all just common pieces of equipment that water utilities use to implement the addition of chlorine and ammonia. Now, when that moves forward and that is actually implemented, a number of activities will be taken, moved forward. First and foremost is flushing. We need to move water through the water system to effectively get the disinfectant, not just at the water plant, but to all of the connections throughout the community. We need water to flow from the water system all the way to the end of that. So that will help achieve and maintain target water quality conditions. We also recognize there's likely to be some sediment that is accumulated and built up in pipes. Those will need to be flushed out over time, and we expect that there could be some discolored water that will be a part of that activity. So flushing from the water utility will help address that, and then there'll be lots of additional monitoring. We need to measure where the disinfectant is and how it's moving through the system and how it is achieving the targeted conditions that we're expecting. So that's measured mostly with total chlorine residual. We're also going to be measuring disinfection byproducts, and I'll talk about those a little bit more now on the next slide. Now, you've not had to have the question about what are disinfectant byproducts before because you didn't have disinfection. But when adding disinfectant to the water, we know that disinfectants react with what's called natural organic matter to form disinfection byproducts. Well, what's natural matter? Organic matter? It's simply the stuff that water picks up as it flows through the ground or even over the surface. The best illustration is when you put a tea bag in the water with your tea and steep it, that is organic matter. So there's other things like leaves and just general organics that pick up, water picks up that as it moves through the environment. As you add disinfectant, it forms disinfection byproducts. And so our testing of the Grand Rapids water supply using either chlorine or chloramine indicated that chloramine forms lower concentrations of the regulated disinfection byproducts than free chlorine does. And so that's one of the big drivers for choosing that, along with the others that I stated on the previous slide. And as the utility is implementing disinfection, they'll be following all the regulatory guidelines and requirements. So that includes routine sampling for the regulated disinfection byproducts in the drinking water at a number of locations throughout the distribution system, and being able to communicate those with you all. So those will start showing up in, on the utility's website, but also in the consumer confidence reports that have to be published. Now, what does this mean for you as customers? First and foremost, as disinfection is implemented, it will take some time for the disinfectant to make its way from the water treatment plant all the way to the outer reaches of the water distribution system. And it's not just the water going from point A to point B through Z everywhere in the system. It's that disinfectant residual will be used up as it's encountering places where it is disinfecting things or oxidizing things. So we want it to be achieving the end result of killing off all the legionella as many places as it can be found, but on its way to all those locations, it will encounter other things like iron and manganese. We know that those things can be a part of the piping systems, can be there from some of the source water conditions historically. And so that iron and manganese, when it reacts with the disinfectant, we would expect that it will cause some release of black or reddish-brown color. And if you experience discolored water coming out of your taps, do what is the best thing that can be done in those cases. Let the water run for a while. Flush the water, whether it's before drinking, or cooking, or laundry, to help eliminate those things, and that'll help not only alleviate it in your location, it will help keep moving the water from the water treatment plant all the way to the end users. All right. So we also need to talk about customers that are critically impacted by this implementation of disinfection because there are, there's important end users. So the first is the hospital. Next is dialysis facilities and patients in particular. Those end users of water have important uses for water that have to make note of the fact that the water is going to change from having no disinfectant residual to having chloramine disinfection residual. And in particular, folks that are on kidney dialysis or have other medical conditions related to that, it's really important that you're in touch with your care provider to ensure that the appropriate measures are being taken. Now, the utilities is already in communication with those types of facilities in the community to let them know, but as always, we want the word to be spread about the fact that disinfection is being implemented. Now beyond that, fish are impacted by disinfectant. So if you have an aquarium, or you're a business that has an aquarium, you need to be able to address those appropriately, whether it's a bait shop or along those lines. Can't use chloramated water without proper treatment, need to be able to deal with that appropriately. Hatcheries, same goes for them, so that communication's already happened, but want to make sure that everybody that's using water from the utilities, it's being used appropriately and helps meet those objectives. Now, what does this mean at your home? Some folks do ask the question, well, what if I don't like the taste or the smell of water after it's been disinfected? There are some certified point-of-use filters that can remove chloramines. Certainly many refrigerator filters accomplish that goal, as do pitcher filters. But while that might be an appropriate thing to do in your kitchen for drinking, we do want to ensure that the disinfectant residual is doing what it's supposed to, which is permeate all the places where bacteria can grow and cause concerns for legionella. So we want the disinfectant residual coming out of the taps where there's a showerhead, or where there might have been a fountain, or if you're using it in some of the other point-ofuses, that'll show on the next slide. One other key point of notice is water softeners. So utilities already softens the water to a pretty significant degree at the water treatment plant, but for those end users that have their own water softeners, note that when disinfection is applied, it can require some additional attention, whether that is additional pre-treatment or just flushing and updating of those. And so we know other communities in Minnesota, as they've implemented disinfection, homes with softeners have experienced some things that actually where there's either discoloration or odor associated with that, which isn't anything to do with the water, it's just with the updating of the softeners that needs to take place at that time. So to kind of get to the last part of this, the key thing here is there needs to be a lot of customer education and action. We need everybody in the community to play their role in implementing best management practices for water, and in the case of customers, it's in buildings. The first detail is, as has been stated before, maintaining hot water systems. We need the hot water to be hot. Warm water isn't good because it's ideal for legionella. I'll show that on the next slide. And in cases where there's been sediment or other things that have accumulated in hot water systems, it's really important to flush that out. And to, all the while, maintain scalding protection. We don't want to trade a bacterial risk for an immediate burn risk. Showerheads and faucets are really critical for points of potential exposure to legionella, and so we want to make sure those things get cleaned. If you can see scale, clean it. Humidifiers, want to follow the recommended practices from the manufacturer. If it is connected to a municipal water supply system where you're using tap water for those purposes, make sure those stay clean, and important to keep those aspects in mind when using those. Hot tubs and fountains are also known to be critical points of exposure for legionella. So again, it's use appropriate manufacturer guidance when using those, make sure those are maintained appropriately. Water filters the same way. Water filters, whether it's at a refrigerator, or a pitcher filter, or an undersink system, they have recommended guidance for how long those should be operated and when they should be changed out and replaced. That may change, the replacement frequency may change now with disinfection being implemented because they'll have different use cases in place. Certainly can stay up to date with all the things that are happening with the utilities, and there's additional guidance that will be posted there. One thing in particular that we are excited to be able to post there is new guidance that just came out in the last month about how flushing can be used to help mitigate concerns with legionella. And so that guidance actually steps you through how to start that. Where do you start? Where do you take the first, where do you start the flushing process? How do you move from the point where water comes into your home or building all the way to the endpoints of your building? And what protective measures do you need to have in mind as you do that? And what you should be looking for and feeling for as you go through the flushing process? So flushing will be a key part of this as we all work together. I don't want to miss the chance to help balance the risks associated with legionella and temperature in hot water. And as Julie's slide showed before, the monitoring program that utilities have implemented have identified some pretty significant legionella results in hot water systems in customer locations across the water system. Those results have all come back in hot water systems which are frankly, in what we would show as the ideal growth range for legionella. So it's hot, but it's not really hot. And so when temperatures for hot water systems are less than 120 degrees Fahrenheit, in particular that 122-degree upper range for the growth range of legionella, it's ideal for those bacteria to grow. So above 68 degrees Fahrenheit, below 122. You have to go all the way up to 158 degrees Fahrenheit to get into the thermal disinfection range for legionella, which clearly is way above what would be acceptable for use in a hot water system because of the scalding risk, because you know, you could immediately scald yourself at that temperature. So the typical guidance, again, it's been shared by MDH and Centers for Disease Control, is to have your hot water system set at or above 120 degrees Fahrenheit, which keeps legionella growth at bay while minimizing scalding risk. But there is a balancing act to be played there. You've got to make sure that you've got the right plumbing fixtures in place to prevent scalding risk with either thermostatic mixing valves or just protective measures, particularly in the bathtub for when kids are being bathed. Julie mentioned before, the typical utility's distribution system temperature is maybe 5 to 15 degrees Celsius or 41 to 59 Fahrenheit. So that's probably one of the reasons why we can't detect legionella in the water coming from the distribution system. It's just not ideal for the bacteria to grow at that point. It needs to get into a location where the water gets warmer and gets more stagnant so they can have an ability to grow. So reiterating those key points, legionella continues to be a concern in this community. There continue to be not only cases, but we are finding and measuring legionella at concentrations of concern in buildings. concentrations of concern in buildings in and throughout the community. Utilities is implementing chloramine disinfection as soon as possible and expected to go live this month. And so we want customers to just start practicing and expect the arrival of disinfectant residual at your faucets and coming out of your showerhead soon. And you'll notice some changes, whether it's with some perhaps initial discolored water that you can flush out throughout your home and businesses and perhaps noticing some of the odor and taste aspects that will come with chloramine. Don't be surprised when that happens and we'll be monitoring and posting results of how we track its progression through the distribution system to help you know when it's going to be there. And we want and need you to implement your efforts with best management practices in your building and in your homes. So with that, your questions and concerns and discussions so we can help meet those needs for the community as we work through this public health response. I'll repeat the question. The question is, how will disinfection be implemented and how will areas of the community receive disinfection at their locations? So the Grand Rapids Public Utilities Water System has a water treatment plant that is located, I'm going to put the point roughly here is the water treatment plant. And the water treatment plant is the sole point where water goes into the water system. And then there are three water towers. There's a water tower that's called the North Tower that's at the water treatment plant. There's the mid tower just south of downtown. And then there's the South Tower, which is obviously the one that's for the south. The biggest one is you drive north into town, you see the South Tower. Water moves radially from that water treatment plant, leaving the water plant, water gets closest, is quickest to be delivered in this area and then it just moves to the south and radially out from the mains that are in those locations. We will have the best indication of how water moves through the system once disinfectant is added because it's the best surrogate to tell us how water moves from point A to point B. We have some what's called hydraulic models that help us understand how water moves from one place to the next, but we can't tell you exactly how fast it will take water to move with disinfectant residual from the treatment plant to your homes and to your business locations. Water generally moves from the water plant to all places in the distribution system in less than a week. But because the disinfectant might be consumed as it's moving from point A to point B, you know, there's places in the pipe that might have some iron or might have some bacteria. So that disinfectant will get consumed by that and then it needs the next aliquot of water to come through and apply that disinfectant and move its way through. Experience from other undisinfected systems, it can take weeks to months for the disinfectant residual to make it to all locations in the distribution system. Know though, that we're working to minimize that time as much as possible to have it happen in a matter of weeks. And I think the key thing will be as disinfection starts, clearly that'll be noticed to be a part of what the utilities are communicating. And then routine daily and weekly sampling will continue to help describe not only how disinfectant residual gets to all these locations across the distribution system, but then in the places that we've been monitoring for Legionella, how is that helping reduce those concentrations and decrease those risks? Yeah, so the question is about if you have a sample result, I presume for Legionella that's positive in a building, you know, Julie described as utilities is implementing their sampling program, they're going to a building and taking three samples. One at the point where water is entering the building, usually at the meter, indicative of distribution system water entering the customer premise. And then a cold and a hot location, generally trying to be at a, both an accessible location, but also some of it's somewhat kind of distant from the point where the water is coming in. So the question is, what's the confidence that other locations in that same building or campus, if it's a multifamily location, are also positive? And there isn't any degree of confidence that others are also positive. It's just, that's why we try to sample at a distal location to give us the greatest likelihood that there's a concern. So the water that's the furthest away from the meter, that takes the longest time to get there, that sits in the system as long, the longest is going to be the greatest concern. That if there is a concern, if there is a positive at that location, it absolutely leads to the next steps of even further implementation of best management practices. Check the water temperature in the hot water system. If it's not high enough, do what it takes to get the temperature in the hot water loop system, especially in multifamily or multi-building locations or multiple floors. Get the building water temperatures up high enough with having scald protection. And then on the cold water side, once disinfection is implemented and the utilities are responsible for making sure you have measurable disinfectant residual at that point where water is coming into the building, then it will be on the building's part to help ensure that there's sufficient water usage and turnover of the water, that the cold water system has disinfectant residual measurable at all those taps throughout the facility. And that's again, that shared responsibility of doing what's, get the water to the buildings and then buildings using the water appropriately to make sure it meets the needs of everybody. The question again is, how do you know if a result at a given location in a given in time helps answer the question of what happens after you've made some corrective measures or implemented some of the best management practices? Well, the first thing is, we can have follow-up sampling and check again. There's some good examples of buildings where high Legionella results were observed, where best management practices were implemented, whether it be with increasing the temperature or increasing flushing or cleaning fixtures, follow-up sampling has then led to lower results, subsequent sampling in the week or two or three after that. And I think in specific campuses or buildings where there's features that would lead to greater concern, if there are observed results of concern, follow-up sampling is absolutely recommended in those cases after taking corrective measures. That will change a little bit with the implementation of disinfection because it adds one more tool to the ability of what we can measure. Because we'll be able to measure the chloramine residual. And if you can have chloramine residual entering the building and then measure it at the distal locations throughout the building, being able to measure chloramine residual at the distal locations throughout the building greatly increases our confidence that we have mitigated the risks of Legionella. And measuring for chlorine in buildings is dramatically easier than measuring for Legionella. You can do this with a much simpler measurement than with a really elaborate laboratory test that the utility staff have had to pick up and start running with, which is pretty unusual. Most water utilities are not measuring for Legionella in their water system or in buildings. So kudos to them for being able to pick that up and get it going as quickly as they have. The question is, with the move to add chlorine, does the pH of the water or any of the other chemistry associated with the water have to be changed to help mitigate concerns for corrosion? The answer is, there are some changes with respect to pH that are going to accompany the changes with adding disinfectant. But generally, adding disinfectant will also improve the corrosivity of the water or help address corrosion control concerns of the water. Historically, Grand Rapids has been in compliance with corrosion control as measured by how much copper and lead is measured in the water. Copper has generally been the greater concern because the water here is a little bit more corrosive, has a lower pH. So Grand Rapids, through the water treatment process, does two things to increase the pH. One is aerate the water, which strips out carbonic acid or CO2. The second is they add soda ash, which further increases the pH. And so we actually have a pretty detailed technical memo assessing all those aspects for both copper and lead corrosion concerns. And there's a monitoring program, a part of the broader monitoring scheme, that will in more detail assess corrosion after disinfection is implemented to ensure that the measures taken to adjust pH are achieving the end result of minimizing both copper and lead throughout the distribution system. But those are, that's part of the reason why this couldn't happen overnight. We couldn't just go by the pumps and the big tank of chlorine and start feeding it without knowing what secondary impact would have happened had we done that. So we feel confident that the program being implemented has answered the key questions about disinfection byproducts, corrosion, and then ultimately the plan for flushing will alleviate the concerns of buildup in the system without making Legionella concerns worse. So that's a lot of steps been taken very, very quickly to get to this stage. Thank you for asking, that's a good point. The question is, is it possible that chloramine could be introduced to remediate and address the Legionella concern and then perhaps be stopped in the future to not have to continue it? I think that will be unlikely, although it is, it's important to note, there is no state or federal requirement requiring the utilities to implement disinfection right now. Which seems odd, there's a legitimate public health concern with a Legionnaires' disease outbreak here right now, which tells you that the regulatory environment isn't particularly up to speed with the pressing public health concerns right now. That actually is likely to change in the next couple of years. EPA nationally is working to address that right now and so we suspect that that will change. That will likely be something that will trigger the requirement for disinfection in situations like this. But, one of the things that I do think will change, you know, we're going to start with a chloramine dose that is higher to be able to help get it out into the water system as effectively as possible. Now, there are upper limits to how much is allowable and we are not going to exceed that limit by any means, but ultimately in time, the expectation is that the dose will be able to be minimized to achieve the target objectives of maintaining a residual and keeping the bacterial concerns at bay. So the question is, could this have happened years ago and we not been aware of it? The simple answer is yes. The rate of Legionnaires' disease detection is thought to be higher now because the medical community, when they encounter cases of bacterial pneumonia, they are now better informed to follow up with the additional testing to help identify if it is due to Legionella bacteria or not. Centers for Disease Control reports the number of cases and the degree of Legionnaires' disease cases is increasing rapidly over the last 10 to 15 years, which in some ways is thought to be attributed to better identification of cases, but we don't believe that's the only thing that's contributing to it. You know, it's increasing in places where people already have disinfection. So we think that the way water is being used in buildings might also be changing. So there's a number of factors contributing to it. We wish we knew what was leading to the current concern in Grand Rapids, but, and we're learning more as all the sampling is happening, but I don't think we have a perfect answer as to what led to the rise of cases most recently, other than we are confident that the actions of implementing disinfection and then taking actions specifically in buildings is what will be best to address the concern. Yeah, good question. Did you have a question?
I was just going to comment on that. I'm a medical provider in the community and we've been testing and training, aside from training to check for Legionella for any cases of pneumonia that are making a little difference or that you're concerned about. And that goes back at least 15 years. So I suspect, I mean, prior to that maybe, there might have been more that we're missing, but if it was in this community, you know, this is something relatively new, not something that we are experiencing five years ago because I know we didn't do the testing.
Yeah. To discern the difference, so the community, local healthcare facilities have been, you're saying 10 to 15 years, been diligent in...
Regularly checking for Legionella.
If you haven't been to pneumonia.
Suspicious for it.
Yep. That's good to know. Thank you for that.
Our website does have a Legionella form if you want to. Either, they're printed out too, if you want to come to the office. Pretty much get ahold of me in any way and we will get you on that list. Other questions about timing, about why we're doing this? We talked about this, this is not, we've prided ourselves for years, you know, we've talked about this for the last four months and I've heard as many comments about don't chlorinate as I have about Legionnaires' concerns. And we know that. Yeah, go ahead.
This is a question I just have heard from the public in the last year. So will there be a cost to the consumer? Or is...
Well, we're working on funding right now. We're working actually through the governor's office, through the Department of Health, through federal efforts with our consultants on funding to try to help mitigate that cost. We've got, we'll then make our consultants that have submitted funding requests for the actual infrastructure that will go into the chlorination system, as well as the emergency response. And so, yes, there is additional cost to chlorinate a system and we're figuring out how do we mitigate those costs with grants, for emergency response, with low interest loans, through the Department of Health, funding sources that way. But it's not a fee that's going to be imposed right now, it goes into our overall cost of service that we will have to do. But that overall cost of service will go on. Thank you all. Stay tuned to our website. If you have, I know not everybody has access to internet, but if you don't, let me know, call me and we can print things out for you. But we are constantly updating on a weekly basis as we get the information, more and more information on both Legionella and the sampling, as well as the chlorination. Thank you all for coming, I appreciate it.